True, we're. We'll start the meeting with that six oh three or something two and get into our meeting. So on the agenda for tonight's planning board meeting. We have Mr. James Smith. Welcome back.
Going for frequent flyer miles.
Yes, indeed, indeed. And you're here tonight. To talk about an application you have to add to the side of the structure and a full foundation. At your current property at H S N Drive. And it looks like you want to be able to do this to mitigate some erosion that. So, okay, and we've been able to talk with you in the past, which we really appreciate that. And I think you've been able to consult with the CEO on various occasions. That too is very important to make sure because he's your key go to guy, right? Great. So Hans, what do we got going on with this? You know, you want to help us get through it?
Well, the diagram we have with. Is. Hopefully his file. Well, one exception. And I'd like to see if I can. Go one way, that's all. See, he's got an eight by ten addition on there and he'd like to make it a twelve.
Twelve by ten. So.
Twelve by ten, yes, twelve by ten.
So it still keeps you under the square footage?
It would be under the square footage. So that would be a hundred and twenty of twelve.
Going north, south.
Of idle to the side.
The side, so it'd be twelve by ten.
All by ten, correct.
Rather than.
Brings you under thirteen feet from the property line.
Actually, it brings him thirteen from the neighbor's house. Right now, the property line, he's sitting approximately ten. And setback is ten.
Right. So our setback is ten in the ordinance, right?
If it matters to my subscription.
And the present. It would not matter.
The present structure. That he's sort of replacing with this is three feet from the property. Okay, so work with that shed, the shed is three feet. So. If we did, if he were to go the extra four feet, that brings him down to six, doubling the distance on the property line now.
Current.
Then catch.
The shed that he's got now is three feet off of the property. So. We built this to the ten foot setback, but he'd really like to go. The six feet from the property line. Okay, so doubling his distance, current distance from the property line. But would still fall inside of that.
So this is a nonconforming lot, is that correct?
The answer of it, yeah.
Do we get this right? He proposes to go into the ten foot setback because the other one.
He's already in it.
I don't think it's separate structure. I don't think we can do that.
See, no, I don't think we can either, not for a new and different structure.
Yeah, that's just my thing.
Obviously, the old one could stay where it is.
Yes, yeah.
Well, the old one's coming out and giving us. Right, yeah, right. So. No, I know that's the. The rules as you become as conformable as possible. But what's presented to the board?
Is the structure setback ten foot? Is that in the showings on the ordinance or another ordinance?
It is. You're on, but although I'm reading a different part of it, I'm on page fourteen reconstruction or replacement in a nonconforming structure. Um, but before that, I haven't found it yet, but I know I've seen it in here for.
It's also in the minimum lot size. It's in several places. Page thirty-three, top of the page.
Yes.
There you go. That's one area where we're a little more restricted than the guidelines.
Is it?
But it's the ordinance, so we have to abide by it.
So that heading is under new principal or accessory structures and expansions. That's what we're, that's what we're going to in the ordinance. And it, it does mention, just as George said. That no portion of any structure is closer than ten feet to any nonshore front boundary of the lot. In addition, our structure will be constructed or expanded closer than thirty-five feet. To the near edge of the road, no closer than twenty-five feet to the near edge of any private road.
So, but that doesn't say anything about our existing.
But when we. Alter a nonconforming structure, you try to bring it as far as much as possible.
As much as possible, but how big is that shed?
Uh, nine by eleven, I can look at it. Larger than the position.
So isn't it? Doesn't he have that square footage?
Or name?
So the shed's bigger than what he's asking for. He's going to remove it. So doesn't he have that nine by eleven square footage?
I don't. Yeah, I don't think you can move into the setback area. Allowance from square footage from something else. Even if that were in the setback here.
Was less conforming. I mean, it's more conform, more conforming.
It may be more conforming in terms of total square footage and sideline setback. But I don't, personally, I don't think we can do it because. The structure can't, another structure can't be made more nonconforming.
So it'd be more conforming. Because it'd be further away. I mean, if it's existing and that's three feet from the. The property line. He's got that square footage regardless. We can't take it away from.
Yeah, but he's got to have it within, it's got, I think it's got to be in, and I can, if it can be placed in a. And maybe it can't.
Well, he's got that square footage regardless. So he's got that nine by eleven. So he's got ninety-nine square feet. And he's asking for eight. So even though it's not ten feet from the property line, he still has that ninety-nine square feet.
Hmm, okay. So let's say I don't disagree with you, right? That the square footage would be something that the applicant would have. Sure. I think what Rich is saying is that, is that encroaching on the ten foot setback is not the place to add that footage. If there was some other place.
Making it more conformant.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
So, I mean, just because it's within the. Um, ten foot setback, I don't think it matters because he already has it. So we can't take it away from him.
Well, could, could he have it somewhere else?
No, we've already decided that.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure the answer is we can't take it away from him. If, if it's done. So that something's made more nonconforming.
It's being made more conformant.
But not the other structure to the, uh, look at each structure separately. And. You, I, I, my opinion is you can't make something that's conforming. A s- a single structure that's conforming, who can't let it become nonconforming. In order to. Use up square footage if he takes away. We've got a conforming structure, but the structure itself is nonconforming.
It's not conforming already.
It is, it is conforming to the sideline setback.
This section is pretty clear that. Um, expansions of an existing structure has to. Be more than ten feet away from the property line. And that's what is proposed. Um, but I, I'm not sure if you're referring to another part of the ordinance that I'm not finding. Greg or.
Wow, I underscored my square footage where it's already not performer. We're making it. More conform by combining them. And so I was just looking to see if we could get that square footage.
Well, it seems to me they're two separate and, and. And unrelated issue. One is the square footage, which admittedly by taking down the shed. He can add to as much as that. To the, um, his principal structure. Um, but. He still needs to comply with the property line setback in so doing.
Even though it's not complied with now, should they make it better than what it was?
I think so, yeah.
That's my tracking mark.
I got a question.
That'd be my thinking too. Yes, Pete.
Yeah, so look, I see ten foot setback in the diagram.
Yep.
And earlier I walked in, there's a three foot thing going on here. What's going on?
The shed that is sitting there right now is three feet from the property.
Okay, and proposal, so the proposal is to make it ten feet now.
Look at the proposal is made this six, you see here, and now, well, what was it, twelve feet?
Oh, like a little call.
We want you on call right now.
Right now, exactly.
So we double the distance from the property line, which it exists in shed is. The distance shed's three feet from the property line. He wants to use that square footage and add it to his house. Here, and so rather than being eight feet, he wants twelve feet. So it doubled the distance what's already there. From the property line. So he's making it eight feet. More control.
So you're going to make it eight feet. In the property line, it says. All right, so I, I'm just thinking, can he go the other way over the other side?
No, we've already.
How many feet is it from the other side of the property? Right now, in the proposals.
What's that?
How many feet on, on, on the other side of the cottage? Uh, in the, uh.
He's got a little standing there, but he's got a septic.
Septic.
Are you a septic?
Yeah.
So he ain't go anymore to the right.
So this is the only spot right here.
The only spot he can do. So he's looking, I can see, yeah, I'm just thinking. He's, you brought him in, he, I waited, waited, drawn out here, you brought him in. To conform to his ten, even ten foot setback. Now all of a sudden you want to go back and make it. Uh. A little bit closer. But it was over there free trade anyways, you know, the tough one call. I don't know how it would have been done in the past. Right, here on the board.
I don't remember one like this on the board, exactly like this.
Right, and I believe the underlying, just so you understand why the last minute that extra footage is important to Mr. Smith is. His entrance is going to be on that little new addition and he's trying to get a stairwell down to the basement. And in eight feet, your standard staircase, you can't get down without. A hazard. So he'd be forced to use a spiral staircase, which really they aren't that practical for. Okay, well, that are our age and size. So it's kind of.
So you're saying that the stairwell is going to be right there?
Going down towards the house, yeah.
So. You have, you have a joint of that?
Because the house isn't existing, has floor plans, walls, everything, and to knock out a wall so that you don't.
But we have a whole portion of the ordinance that talked about that. So when we have a handicap or this kind of scenario, so. You have to be more lenient, lenient. And then we have recently.
Really handicap, you're right, and the handicap, you might be able to do it, but then what are you going to tell it? You got to take the handicap. You know, that piece out though, maybe, I don't know, that's.
So, to answer your question, sir, that authority lies with the Board of Appeals, not us. In main, in main law.
Really?
Yeah. And this came up, what, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
The hardships or, or, or a month ago.
Exactly, when we dealt with the, the debt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we get, so if that being the case. If we, if he, if we said no here, then he'd go to the field for it and, and ask to have the extra two feet or whatever, two feet.
Four feet, four feet.
I would say that would be the approach.
Yes, our reduction.
Under hard, I guess hardship or administrative or something.
I hope you understand, because.
I'm with you.
It is, if we are leaning with you. We're setting a precedent for everybody else.
Yeah.
And then everybody else that we didn't do, the, the acceptance, then we're pissed off.
I understand.
So I, I just.
It isn't like I'm trying to build a client, so. I got someone.
Thank you.
In addition, you know, by looking at the ordinance, we haven't found anything in here that would allow that request. It talks about.
I mean, I haven't seen anything where we take away the square footage either, because it says new principal or accessory structures. And expansions of existing principal or accessory structures. So it's including both.
Yeah.
So how do we take that away?
You don't point it, yeah.
Yes, including both.
We'll keep him being the sentence.
Shall be located.
Yeah, keep reading the sentence.
Within a nonshore front boundaries so that the portion of any structure is closer than ten feet from any. Nonshore prep boundary of the law, but it's already existed.
But if he tears it down or moves it. One, first of all, the shed, if you tore it down, it would have to be moved the greatest practical extent.
Which it is, it's being moved sideways to the greatest practical extent. So we have that, that's taken care of.
But there's nothing that guarantees somebody can have the same square footage. If they can't make the, if it makes something more nonconforming.
It's not making it more nonconforming.
It's making the main structure, man.
It would.
But it's also making the accessory. A structure more conforming. So we have a wash on both.
I don't think we can.
Why not? Why can't we?
Because you get, each structure is dealt with separately. And when one structure is conforming the sideline setback. We can't, no matter what we do, I don't think we can make that, allow something to come in into the sideline setback because. That's now making the original structure not more nonconforming.
But it's making the accessory more conforming. So it's a wash.
The, the, the difference I would have on that is that the accessory structure goes away. The minute you tear down the shed, it's done. But right, what we're doing is taking that square footage from that structure.
Right.
And adding it to now the principal.
Structure, you know.
Which then, in my mind, then that whole blob, this thing becomes a principal structure.
So I just lose my importance.
Yeah, it's like, it's what that's saying, but I don't know if I agree.
It's, it's not all gone, but that which exceeds the, in my opinion, that ten foot setback, you wouldn't be permitted. Under what I'm seeing in the ordinance.
In my mind, this is no different than if he took that shed. Used whatever square footage he used to build that and say, I want to build my. Rest of my square footage on the front of my deck. Uh, it's, it wanted sideline setback, it had a water setback. But if we can allow him to move the shed and. Decrease the sideline setback. What would prevent him from, us from approving? The moving the shed and putting it in, in, in the front. It's making it more nonconforming to water setback.
Yeah, you got a point, yeah. So when he goes, right, if it goes to the field board. So what's, I'm trying to. How that, how that discussion ever go in front of field? So I don't appeal for it before. I never heard of that very like that.
They got four criteria.
Pardon me?
They got four criteria and he would not pass the four criteria.
Yeah.
Um, the two that he would not pass is, is the hardship created by the owner.
Right.
And it's because he's the one building it. The other thing is, is there a.
Reasonable return?
There's a reasonable return. That's arguable. But, um.
But he created the hardship. Yeah, I understand that.
And.
Right, yeah.
The third one is basically is a necessity. There is not. A handicap situation. It's a convenience. You know, structural convenience. Again, a spiral staircase, I don't think they're safe. I don't think they should be allowed unless they're. It'd be why.
I have a brief moment.
But.
As I mentioned.
The space that he'll be allowed, you know, would be.
Which I'm living with right now.
Yeah, it's, uh, so I don't think you'd make it to a goodness.
Yeah. So the, the other basis for an appeal is the interpretation of the law. And if we're interpreting the law correctly here. He can challenge, he can challenge it and, and maybe. The field board would say, well, they don't agree with our interpretation on it. And then he could. Win in that situation. So that's kind of where you gotta go down, you know? Can you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's, you gotta read the appeals, get familiar with the field law and the good ways to do it.
And so on page seventy-one of our ordinance, we talked about the appeal procedure.
You should have the four criteria with the, I think it's the third one that does it. You want me as well.
But right now, it would probably go okay if I just stay with eight by ten.
Yes, oh, yeah.
I don't, I don't see an issue in eight by ten.
Yeah. Why would that, that, what? Setback from the property line.
Ten by ten, we go by either.
That gives you what? Eight foot. Yeah, setback.
Not in my mind.
No, right.
Because of the way it was, I'm interpreting what I'm seeing in the ordinance. The ten foot setback is, is very clear.
I, and you don't think it applies in the appeals, really? I mean, I.
You, you could try it, you know, it's up to you. And then you, if it doesn't need to come back and.
Worst they could say is no.
Yeah.
And you go back to your.
So we'll come back here and do the, you know, what it is.
Yeah, right on.
Also, also, you do, do your homework.
Yeah.
Get, get advice. And, uh. Uh, that front of how that corner is going to be. And the reason why that corner is going to be. Uh, to be very important, I think.
And where, what's, where's the paper for the appeal?
I said in, on page seventy-one of this current ordinance, it talks about making, when you make an appeal, the criteria that's listed there. And they talked about the decision of the Board of Appeals and. And if you need to appeal that to a superior court, like I talked about the whole part. You know, I certainly. I'm telling you this to be fully transparent with you, you know? I hope that you get what you need, right? But sometimes what one wants is not the same.
There, there is a timeframe. You have to do it within thirty days of our decision.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think, uh. Peter was right in terms of, you really could have, if we denied it, you could appeal on two different reasons. One is you could deny it. Saying that we're misinterpreting the ordinance, that you can go in and set back. Or the other reason, yeah, is that, uh. We're saying that, well, it's all, I guess, related to interpretation, uh. But, uh. You would have to convince some of the four. Criteria that Hans was talking about. And one of them is the land in question cannot yield a reasonable return without the variance. And I think the courts are not, think, I know that they've got a rule that if you've got. A, a structure that's you're living on can live there like anybody else. Um. You get a reasonable return on that piece of property. And then the other one is need for variances due to the unique circumstances of property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood. And granting of variance will not alter the essential character of locality. And. Or the hardship is not the result of action taken by the applicant or prior owner. I think the two that. Would be difficult to make is the first one, reasonably return of the property. And then the hardship. Uh, being caused by the. Owner doing what they're, they're doing. But I definitely would encourage you to get a copy of it. And Mary's probably still out there, probably just. Get that.
Mary's Brian Lee and the research.
For the appeal.
Yeah, now, I got, I got one more question. This is learning from me anyways. Uh. Does the borders have anything to say in this thing?
See what?
Their border. The person, the person next, next door to them.
No, not really. They, they could come in.
And say that they have no problem with it, yeah.
But that doesn't change our, that decision. We've got to go by the, the word of the ordinance, not by. Popular or owner, whatever other people.
Right.
So, yeah. Uh, so moving the whole thing over two feet, it's not feasible. The whole camp.
No. If I could move the whole thing, that might be able to do it.
So if you move the whole camp two feet, that would give you ten feet, ten by ten.
But you end up to a different setback situation because he's got his stuff that thing. If he moves this whole stuff.
I have a holding tank.
Yeah.
That runs from parallel.
And how far away from camp is it?
I haven't totally measured it, but I'm guessing it's probably six feet there.
And he's only about eight foot. So that's, he's encroaching inside of an already encroached farm. Even the setback.
Well, in the scheme of things, that could be moved and that's relatively expensive. The other thing is, uh, where was your door coming in for your stairwell?
I, I was hoping to do it on the new, uh, new section.
Yeah, but on the front, well, the driveway side or the?
Yeah, on the driveway side.
So it can't come down and drop down. And then turn it around.
Well, I got that stupid wall, you know, though. I'm just retaining the wall. So I gotta go into the wall and then it still runs the line.
No, I mean inside for your stairwell. So you were going to put your stairwell on the driveway side.
On the driveway side, coming down.
Coming down there. So you have ten feet there.
Yes.
So you can't. Put that in and then turn at the bottom and come across and have your head clearance. I almost think you can.
Uh, you might be able to.
It'd be the whole length down.
On this, on the property side.
Yeah, yeah, open up the whole addition and be just a steadily.
Well, I have a team, a little lesson there. Okay, with what we have, I mean, this can be approved.
What's that? What you have here would be approved?
I think so.
Yeah, one or not, right? I just remember, doesn't get it over with. So, so if that's the case, you'd like to proceed with what we, it's been presented, second rec. And then. Yeah, if you're just finding some fact and conclusions of law. Thank you.
Um, I have a question, um, this mostly because I'm more confused on which. I know we've got a revised draw. I know we got a revised drawing, uh, which of the applications that we've had in the past is now the relevant one. It's one from August third, there's one from August third and November third.
It's November third.
The November third, and are those numbers still correct? For the square footage is?
Yes.
Okay, so we just need to be clear that the whatever site drawing was submitted with this is no longer the one we're considering. Is this? That needs to be go away somehow. So that needs to be marked replaced or something.
We'll just attach the new one.
Right.
That's what you would do, right? So because you do you have a?
Yeah.
Because you've got to be correct, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So if you have the original, just.
I can't just say there's no confusion in the future.
Okay. All right, so we have an application, right? We're good on the numbers. And right, Hans, you're good with all the information that's there. Any, are there any questions about what's on that application that we need to ask? If you're all good?
Okay.
We're good?
Makes sense to make sure this is referenced in terms of uh, Mr. Smith, the James Smith, there was no labeling on it. This is the one I have.
Yeah, but I'll be attached to them.
Yeah.
Attached to the.
Put a date, something on it, his name and date on it, then who does they? I mean, I mean, uh. Thank you.
Okay, so um we have the site drawing, we've talked about it at length. It's something you'd like for us to proceed with the application that now contains this site drawing for your proposed activities.
Oh, yeah.
Fantastic. No more questions on the application.
One, I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay, on the proposed change in construction, change in use line. Should we have added to that the demolition of the uh uh, of the shed? Since that's integral to getting the adequate square footage.
Yes.
So maybe Mr. Smith could just add it right here or in initially.
Doing a certain condition?
No.
A description.
In the description and and question number five on the application, which you could ask the proposed construction. Uh, right at the moment, all we have is deck replacement to original footprint, basement, full foundation, uh, addition on back to access basement and ramp. And that's all fine. It's just I'm suggesting that we add to it and demolition of the of yeah, or removal shed or something to that effect. And Mr. Smith could uh, initial it and data and then we would be good to go.
What's we?
Fifteen. Falls and mixed over. Okay, if we, are we okay then to proceed to the findings of fact and conclusions of law? Are we all comfortable then? Alrighty. So this is for James Smith, he addresses at eight Chestnut Drive, this is map lot, map fifty lot twenty-three two. Uh, the applicant applied for shoreline permit for the things that were listed, deck replacement to original footprint, full foundation to assist erosion control, addition on back to access basement. We should probably use the same words on this that we just added to that, right? The removal of the um that, you know, so if you could be so kind, I will put that on here. So that this will match that. Okay. Um, the application was presented to the board on twelve fifty, twelve one, eleven seventeen, and that's all we have listed. So are we good with that? Hans, we happen to say anything, right? Got three days previous to.
Yes, yeah, I want that on other agenda.
Thank you. Uh, so based on the app, on the application materials, testimony, statements, evidence, documents, and other materials submitted to it and the above findings of fact, the Belgrade Plan Board finds that the project um is permitted under section fourteen, table one in the ordinance and makes further and further makes the following conclusions based on the applicable provisions in section sixteen D of the ordinance that and we'll do a roll call vote. You have ten of those, yes, 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 but we'll still do a roll call vote because we're live. Number one, that will maintain safe and healthful conditions. So by a vote, uh, the board found this standard was met. And so this is based on application submissions. So this is for that it will maintain safe and healthful conditions. By a vote, this was met. So and we have a full form, so so. So Pete.
Yes.
Yes, Sarah.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Craig and me too. Five in favor, none opposed. Number two, that it will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters. The board by a vote found this standard was met. So Pete.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Craig. Me too, five in favor and opposed. Three, that it will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. By a vote, the board found this standard was met. So this is for wastewater, so can?
If Sarah.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Craig. Me too. I have a favorite, none opposed. Number four, it will not have any adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. The board found this standard was met. Pete, Sarah.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Frank. Me too, five in favor, none opposed.
Um, I'm sorry, like this. And Jack.
Yes.
The last, the erosion control. The last uh section. There are, this is on a hillside. Should we make a condition for uh edge or grip of control?
Oh, for the.
After after it's raised, the elevation's gonna change. The soil is gonna be disturbed. They should put in.
Yeah.
I'm drawing a blank on the name of, you know, the stone.
Yeah.
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 It's a very good point, and I think that that my senses will have that in that condition for sure. Because it will be, right, the old sheds going away, right? So it's gonna be new construction that's have tacked on to that. So the board has um jurisdiction of that new construction, there'll be new roof. So in indeed, this will be part of that.
Including the raising of the.
In in yes, that too.
Principal structure.
So there is room for that to have happened. So I I I know it will be in there. So good thinking. And you know what we're talking about?
Yes, yeah, right, right, it comes off.
That's right.
So correct.
That's all. Yeah. Yeah, precisely. Um, let's move forward. Number five, that it will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. So by a vote, the board found this standard was met. So this is about should shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. Pete.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Yeah, George.
Yes.
Craig. Me too. I have a favorite, none opposed. Six, that it will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in uh, coverage of plan. By a vote, the board found the standard was met. So.
Yeah.
Pete, Sarah.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Craig. Me too. Uh, will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. So by a vote, the board found this standard was met. So this is about floodplain development. Pete.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Craig. Me too. The next part, number eight, has many parts. Many of them are not applicable, but we'll go through it anyway. Um, it's it is in our uh, form here. So it is number eight, is in performance with the provisions of section fifteen land use standards. We'll do this. I'll kind of go through them all. Uh, we'll mark what's not applicable and then what's left over, what is applicable, we'll go on. So we're, the board found that this standard was met based on the evidence and the record and further as follows. At a minimum lot standards. So I would say that is applicable. I mean, we on the same page on that? That that yes.
Yes.
Principal accessory structures.
Yes.
Yep. Campgrounds. In a individual private campsites in a uh, commercial and industrial uses in a parking areas in a roads and driveways. Is that a yes or is that a?
A, I would think, because he's not proposing changes to it, right?
H signs. Uh, I storm water runoff. Thank you. J septic waste disposal systems. That's a yes. K essential services. Said in a mineral and exploration and extraction. Okay.
I'm not gonna do any lithium mining out there.
I find something good in my building.
All right, um, agriculture. Not applicable. Um, and timber harvesting and land management roads in a O clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting. Is any proposed?
No.
Uh, P hazard trees, storm damaged trees, and dead tree removal.
Part of them, yeah.
Mother Nature helped out there. That's why I'm here.
That's what started it all.
Q exemptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements, none proposed, right? No. Uh, R revegetation requirements. Say in a, in a uh, erosion and sedimentation control. Yes. Shoreline stabilization.
He does have a plan that it's any length, so at least that it's over.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. For our purposes, uh, was it still in a, though, correct? Uh, U soils.
Uh, in a.
In a water quality. Yes, historical and archaeological sites. That is not one of the four, um, in town resource protection. It's not in resource protection. So we had several things in here that did apply. Water quality, erosion, and sedimentation control. Septic waste disposal, storm water runoff. Principal and accessory structures and minimum lot standard. So as a whole, we are saying that this application is in conformance with the provisions of the section fifteen land use standards for these things that apply. Uh, so by a vote of all those that apply, we do a Pete.
Yeah, yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Craig. Me too. Five in favor and then opposed. Okay. Conditions of approval needed to meet required Belgrade shoreline zoning ordinance findings in uh, section sixteen D. So one, manage storm water runoff from new or expanded structures. Um, in accordance with section fifteen I of the shoreline zoning ordinance and main D E P's best management practices um, as outlined in the conservation practices for homeowners publication. So we still have that around? They hand out or do we just point them to the website?
Yeah, the website, okay.
Um, such measures that are beautiful, put in place prior to building uh, use, no, there's any condition that applies to all permits unless deemed unnecessary by the planning board. Um, based on the following rationale. Do we have any rationale to not have this?
Yeah, I had one question. What's the flow of the property been? Why not only? Fifty in the center or thirty?
Steep.
Steep.
Steep and not enough to be in resort protection.
Uh, no.
Does that help answer your question? Great. Number two, this is the second condition of approval. Uh, the planning board's approval of this project is limited to that described in the application and depicted in any accompanying site plan and other application submissions. Any changes to or deviations from the application site plan or other submissions as approved by the planning board must receive prior approval by the planning board, including but not limited to changes to proposed location, footprint, height of structures, changes in the number of bedrooms, roads and driveways, parking, wells, subsurface wastewater disposal systems, the extent and location of vegetated areas, tree cutting, and natural vegetation clearing. Methods of soil erosion and storm water runoff control. This too is a standing standard condition of approval of our shoreline zoning permits. Are there any other um conditions we need to put on this?
I don't think so.
Just do a certified contractor number on that.
Yeah, then allowing. Three oh five two.
Sweet. Good point. Okay, so based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law on today's date. The town of Belgrade Planning Board will do a vote now, approved by a vote. So so this is to approve this. Do you have a question?
I do. I just realized it. This application started last time, didn't it?
It up last time, but we it started a meeting prior to at least one meeting.
Yeah.
So that be but not last time.
So you so on this.
Last time was just the inquiry.
Yeah.
I used to, I was not sure if I was supposed to bore or not.
You're good. Yeah, I think you're fine.
Yeah, I would think, I think.
I've been making notes since then and I'm not.
With the two out of three rules.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, so good, good question. So those in favor to approve this application, so to approve, so Pete.
Approve.
Yeah, Sarah.
Approve.
Thank you. George.
Yeah.
Craig, yeah, and me too. So that's we voted five in favor and none opposed. By a vote of that of course, the shoreline permanent application of James Smith. With the above, this was approved, uh, with the above conditions and a meeting on today's date. Develop these written findings of fact and conclusions of law in remand from the Belgrade Board of Appeals and adopt these findings on. Okay, so it has been approved. Mr. Smith, best wishes to you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You've been a a pleasure to work with. Thank you for dealing also with.
Yeah.
And and asking those questions to get you through the process, extremely important and I appreciate that. So thanks, Hans. Thanks for your help.
So you.
It will be mailed to you, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas.
Give me a call tomorrow. Yes, so so we're gonna make sure everything's.
Yeah.
They just hands down.
So there was some. Erosion control.
Okay, awesome. Perfect. And I think you probably have the original of this, right?
So then, okay, thanks.
So then, okay, thanks.
We have a. We have an email.
Oh, yeah.
And so when we get to that, is that part of the C E O update?
It is.
So just to be very clear, so the only order of business on, on our agenda was done, right? Next is, and there's no new business, so the next is your update, so go for it.
Your business.
Folks, you have new business, anything, or you're really interested in what we do, because it's that fun?
It is actually really interesting, but there was a point that we talked about regarding cabling of applications during the last meeting. And Hans was gonna call the attorney, which I believe he did.
So stick around, that's what Chris is about.
Right, I may have some thoughts on that if the board would consider public comment, that's all. Okay.
Yes.
So, if you can see here, Bill's, there's, you know, we. And I have found some of our ordinances have on applications that it's void after a certain time period. As a line item, but it's approached as, put it directly in the ordinance. Is stronger enforceable, so it's basically doing all of our ordinances to update. That there is an expiration. What I've done with some of our applications that have been tabled is I've just called the people and say, are you interested in pursuing this or not? I'm weeding them out that way. And then telling them, well, let's move forward. So you've got a stack in the box and you want me to call some people and eliminate the. You said you had a bunch of stack them in the bottom of your bag.
I checked those.
Give it to me and I'll call them all. I don't know that you wanna use mine as the official record.
Yeah, well, I came in, I don't know how old you're.
Oh, no, no, they, these don't predate you.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, then I can cover that, yeah.
So Hans, thanks for taking that on, so, so it sounds like the advice from, from Phil is that we basically amend. Many of our ordinances to include this language to specify the thirty day part or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm with you on all that, you know, so if we say ninety, then we would have to include that in all of our ordinances, right? So there would be a relatively simple amendment, but we're not there yet, so until we do, I guess I would be wondering, is the board? And are you okay by being basically the timeline gatekeeper, right?
That's fine, I mean, that's to me makes it easier because this leads into the other thing we're gonna talk about is fee structures. Are these a way updated?
For sure.
There are a lot of small towns around here that are charging more than what we charge. Not that we need to charge more than them, but these haven't been updated forever and also they're not in ordinance. And we probably shouldn't put them.
We actually haven't paid about fees a lot back, did we?
Well, actually the select board does that.
Yeah, yeah, there was an update though, you're right, there was something, I don't remember it being a large change, but there was something.
A couple of years ago.
I know some fees haven't been changed twenty-five years.
Yeah, we had a budget committee last Tuesday. And somebody mentioned that they can someone search, we had to change this stuff for ten fifteen years.
Yeah, and we should introduce some impact fees now with the water situation we've got, we've got, that's a changing little town.
Yeah.
We've got. Issues that we should consider, and yes, the fee structure is a select board thing, but I believe they're gonna look to. Other people to give them the right ideas.
Yeah.
Don't you can leave between the lines.
Right, right, yeah, good thinking and it's good to be. Proactive rather than reactive, I think in this case, so. Alrighty, so from a process perspective, if you're okay being the timeline gatekeeper and calling people and saying. Are you in or are you out, and they just have to say yeah and a.
Yeah, I'd like to have all of cases of paperwork that you've got, just to make sure that we get them all covered. Because I've got some that do predate me in my office.
We still have to amend the ordinance, so.
Yeah. No.
Right, how is that process work, does it go to vote or can we do that, we, we've amended before, so.
Yeah, we would just have to go to the voters, the whole line yards.
Something like that, we have to go to the voters, I thought we just amended our ordinance, little things like what you just wrote up there.
Oh, that was just to the, to the, or conditions to the permit. Application, that wasn't actually the ordinance.
Now, we could probably take an informal policy, again, it might not be enforceable very well. But until that is changed, could, could we as a board say our policy is that. Tabled permits aren't tabled more than ninety days before they're known void.
That's not a possible, yeah.
You have, you had a question?
It's kind of a point where the appropriate community. Duralize some of those, please. So I guess there's a, you know, bringing a new ordinance to the town is burdensome process, you know, takes a lot of effort. You folks, the townspeople themselves to decide whether or not to create a new, or do you modify the ordinances? But I think there are processes in place that I think Shane would know a little bit more about in technical detail. But the term cabling, is that a term apart that you folks are using and saying we're cabling that, that we motions are able? I don't know that applications. Can be able, a decision on an application can be delayed, I think there needs to be a date. Or delaying a decision like that with regard to sort of how things are supposed to work. So if it's, if, if. The one direction to go certainly would be to create the ordinances. And that sounds like the most burdensome way to go and certainly the most enforceable way to go if there's going to be enforceableness component of it. But if there's an sort of a process for doing business, that may not need to go to an ordinance. And there might already be rules about that, so I'm not sure. We have a depending about, like that, and Shane, what was the term that?
I guess for me, just looking at stuff. When, when you guys go to training, you run the meetings, is it like Robert's rules is what you guys use as a standard as far as making motions and doing things like that? Is that what the state uses?
That, that's interesting because that's very clear and declared in the school board. But in here, in all the training that we're here, I never seen the rolling rules being called up.
You haven't used the Robert's rules?
No, but that, it says in governance stuff and this kind of procedures, that's usually what everybody sets, relies on.
Right.
Okay, even I think even in Congress, that's what they do, but I guess what I'm trying to tell you is that in terms of when you get training. And what the code or the protocol that you're supposed to abide, abide by. In the training that I had done for the planning board. And I don't remember seeing rolling rules of order in the school where I have.
Because I think that's something that you could bring in.
Yeah.
Where if somebody made a motion to, I mean, the, the two terms that they use is postpone to a later date. Then you could specify the date of which you wanted stuff done by, so like in. In the case by us with, where, you know, our neighbors have this cease and desist order that the town's hung there since June. With a table. Application and the town sets these three or four things that need to have met, then there's a timeframe when you make that motion. You know what I'm saying, where right now there is nothing, everything's just kind of pondering. So I was just curious if that's, if this board use that. Avenue. Like studying the timeframe.
And perhaps leveraging those rules would be a mechanism that you can use to adjust your process. To achieve what you want to achieve without having to go through ordinances and certainly be conforming with the rest of the sort of standard processes within the town.
I think, I think what I said back, in, in the school board is policy to follow rolling rules. I think actually in this kind of business, I only heard to be suggested to use rolling rules of order. It's not, you always said in, in school boards, it's, it's.
The reason that, that bringing it up is that it's just an avenue you could use.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have to the less burdensome mechanism.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think though we could, by establishing some procedural protocols. That we could. Impact an applicant in terms of their ability to revive a, a tabled application, I don't think we can go that far, that, because that's. Imbringing on their rights, the, that has to be done through a legal process like, like the, the adoption of the ordinance. The, the other thing I wanted to mention that comes into play, I was actually odd that, should, but. Back in nineteen ninety-one, the, the select board established a charter for this board. And there is not the level of detail you're describing, but there are some. Some procedural. Processes in there that they want the planning board to follow, it's very old, it's problematic as it turns out, but. Most of it has to do though with how we run a public hearing. We almost never have a public hearing, but the, so it's not the level of detail you're describing in terms of day-to-day operations. But things like, you know. How we make our decision, what constitutes a majority, you know, who can even participate in a decision, that's all dictated by statute. And, and court decisions. And so for us, the, the guidance, if you will, is on the Maine Municipal Association is put together a, a. Planning board manual, which is what the training that Sarah was referring to is based on, and all of us had to take beyond this board. That's not to say we follow it to the letter. But we don't.
As I was, as I started out, I'm not, I'm certainly not as educated as all of you in terms of processes, the term cabling. I guess if there is a formal definition of what it means, other than the break, the meaning is which is we're gonna lay a decision on this.
Right.
For the courtesy of the applicants, that's all well and good. Then the issue becomes, it doesn't become burdensome for the town or. Residents to have something infinitely deferred, and what does that mean about enforcement, right?
Well, I think the answer to that is, at some point, it does become unfair to everybody concerned, including the planning board, to the abutters. And because it's just kind of hanging out there and, and you just, you know. It could lead to, to confusion in the future, was this approved, wasn't approved, all of those kinds of things, and, and so. I mean, I, I certainly would be good with, whenever we take another look at the shoreline zoning ordinance, I mean, we gotta revise the map as it is. And that requires going to the voters. And, you know, that this be put in, into the hopper.
Yeah, be relatively simple to do.
Yeah, it would. I mean, I agree with Craig and you, Peter, that I, I thirty days is too short, but.
I think Andrew hit on it when he said tabling, would change the verb, if I use that word, to postponed pending. Feedback within a certain period of time, you know, make it very plain language. Yes, being postponed till the applicant resolves the situation or brings the information that we're requiring.
They have to be.
For ninety days.
Yeah, they have, no, that would be a term for it, and I get, I feel, make it fair for everybody, especially for the public. They have to be turned into it, you have, your, this application is live or, or the, the table in this life for two months, three months. This, that puts ownership and responsibility on the applicant.
And it also gives you, if there was any fine that was ever gonna be put on that, gives you a date that if this doesn't match this timeframe. You fall back to this time than if you were to propose fines, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it forces the person's hand, whoever it is, that they have to do something about it.
It gives everybody a check.
Gives you the legal footprint of they were told to do this by this date or this could happen. Because right now you're just sitting in a world of limbo where something's tabled. We've got a sticker on our fence and it sits there for three years.
And it's not fair to Hans because he's kind of hanging fire on a case like this.
Right.
Where, you know, he's waiting to see what we're gonna decide, and right now we're not deciding anything. And to determine whether, you know, the, an after the fact application is gonna be approved or approved in part. What parts are gonna be approved, what parts are gonna be denied, et cetera, and, and. These issues, I, I would want to know that.
The reason it gets brought up is because, you know, this is like maybe the first case the town's seen for a while. But it's, everything's pushing towards this type of environment where more stuff's getting done. Without the permit, stuff gets brought up to, you know, Hans's attention, he goes and looks and see, hey, this is a violation and. He has to make the decision or come talk to you guys or whoever to say, you know, how do we stop this situation from exacerbating itself? You know, so you're hanging a little orange sticker up and then you can contact those people and you do things, so then there's a process that goes through it. But until you have a date that says, you know, here's this, here's this, here's this, here's this, then there's nothing.
And the longer it is, the more stressful it is.
Right.
But Hans, if he wanted to, he could. Well, wanting to simply start legal action with or without a permit. Or, or he could say, your application's pending before the planning board, it's been pending for two months. If you don't come back to the planning board by a certain date to get the permit, I'm gonna proceed on formal enforcement.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right, Rich, right.
So for the planning board, until such time we amend our, our ordinances, rather than use the phrase table. Which I think we've been doing, it sounds like maybe incorrectly based on what you're saying.
It, it sounds that way.
Yeah. We. We could introduce something with a timeframe.
Very specific.
At least that was.
I'm sorry, in terms of the delay that we were discussing earlier, you were, during, if you were to follow those rules, you'd be obliged to put a date on it.
Yeah.
There's not a guidance for what the date would be.
Right.
But ninety days, certainly seems.
Yeah, they've got a postpone, then you do a motion to postpone to a later date. And I mean, it's just another Robert's rule where you can make a motion to do things that way where you're specifying a time rather than. If cable becomes an independent thing that doesn't really pull any weight. I mean, that's just something for you guys to, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, I'm just saying it's, it's an idea though, another way of.
Sure, I, I think anything to improve our process that, that helps the town is a good thing to do, right?
I mean, the circumstances here, in the case that you're interested in, is a little different than others we've had in the past. But we had, had others that I can think of, including some in this pile that I'm gonna give Hans, at least one of them that. You know, the applicant said, I'd like you to table, you know, please table this so that I can redesign this or reconsider that, you know, and then we never hear from them again. And so we don't know, you know, what's going, if they're ever gonna come back, and, and so it's just kind of dangling out there, it's unfinished business.
Yeah, with, with our application five years ago, it was extremely helpful to get your feedback and be able to adjust our plans. For all the non-conformance, those issues that we had there. So I think that's a valuable service that you can provide to the public when you're trying to get an application through, because just proving or denying for shots alone.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's nice to have that back and forth with you both, but certainly having somebody that's never ending.
Right.
And then add to that other types of circumstances where you have non-conformance. Done with that permit, you know, and you're looking at records back to approvals, that really meant money's the law or you can put it there, so. I think it's a great thing that you guys do.
Here's one from last June.
Benefited from that too.
You know, let's hang in bar.
Right.
I I can say, from my opinion, I think one of the things that has been done, the spirit behind the idea of doing it. A table. Had been used at one point to um. Uh. To. Somehow. Have that person consider what was talked about, go back, revise what they need to then then come in. Without having to pay the application fee again.
Sure.
And um.
All twenty five bucks or whatever.
Yeah, you know, now we know that's quite outdated and so on, but I think that, well, I'm not trying to defend it, I'm just saying, I think that was kind of the. Spirit of collaboration, we're just not trying to ding the 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 applicant, it was. How can we work together on some stuff for you to? Take what we've done. In consideration of an application, the light bulb. Moment happens for the applicant, they oh, I have to do that. They go back, take some time, consult with a builder or somebody, then come back in and say, oh, this is what I wanna do. It's that type of, I I know that that has been. A thing in.
Well, as you said, part of our job is to provide people guidance to.
Right.
It's not just to bring decisions.
So I kind of wonder the legality of. Hans being able to go and stop pressure on somebody because they can just turn around and say, now it's tabled. So until we have a limit on our table.
Yeah, I guess I would say no strong arm, you know, I would say just.
No, there's no. It's a simple question.
Yeah, cause you may very well find uh that somebody say, oh, geez, I forgot all about it or you know, whatever.
Asking is fine, but telling them was, I don't know, because that's gonna be a legality.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
Time limit either, um. You know, so I'm not opposed.
Yeah, we need just to need to be careful about how we do it.
So to me, ninety, hundred, twenty days is funny for someone to get their stuff together. Uh because, you know, especially during this recent time, over times, to get an engineer. Um. To redo something or, I mean, or even to hire one. They're gonna be four months out.
Or yeah, you need to consider all that.
Yeah.
Or or have an out so that somebody in that kind of a unique situation circumstance could get more time on the work, but a definitive amount of time.
Right. You could always add. You could add a an additional deferment, maybe uh the possibility of an appeal for an additional thirty days of somebody having surgery if they're.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. Well, it's good stuff, thank you for bringing this this up, I think it will help us do our jobs better. You know, for any applicant that's using. Sarah.
Yeah, I will add that to reconsideration of the ninety days. To be added to the ordinance. The idea of having rubber uh rule orders. As a protocol is fantastic. Because when people come here. They really know. What's gonna be the. The pay the payroll. Within they know. What to ask and how it's gonna be. This around around uh rule, rule of order. Really help you avoid a. A social chaos in the meeting. This is this. The chairman can say, hey. Rule here, and and if you know the code. Would have to step back, because we. We are writing by that. And you can help, you can help people accountable for it as well. But are people that are out of order. In the meeting, you call the rule and. It's all over. So we just two words is understood rather than. Calling the police or something like that.
Got you.
So uh those two items will be something to be capable to add to the ordinance, let's say. I don't know, you can. You can add to orders to follow rule of order and the meanings. I know his policy in the uh school board. His policy.
I don't wanna see that. I don't know what it is.
I know what it is. I don't know, I don't know, I've never seen it applied to a regulatory uh setting.
Oh, I gotcha.
That's the issue I have.
Yeah.
I thought you guys were doing very well, that's how much I know. I thought that's what you were used to, because every little meeting I've gone to has been that way, you guys that. Making a motion and nodding around to each other in point of discussion and. That's pretty much what you're doing.
I think we've tried to fa- follow a mo- a model.
Right.
You know, and that includes, you know, an amount of decorum, you know, civic, you know, being civil.
I mean, and maybe everybody's seen this happen, we're at town meeting. Uh you know, everybody for the select board and and and. And the moderator have to get together on what's Robert rules of order say about this, you know, and and. Um. It's important, um I I guess I would need to note, see how, you know, the details.
Rules could not, yeah, I mean, in those rules allows you to set. Those constraints of time, rather than it being an order to solve. I'm saying. Cause if the town, if you put that ordinance, change your ordinances and town blows it down, then you're back to this situation right here. If the town said, no, we don't want those changes. Then you you you're still in this position.
Yeah, right.
Going back to the uh. Tabling. Thing there. Would it make sense and and maybe it's just matter of picking up the phone or something. We kind of have a policy. That if something sits table for ninety days. And the person that doesn't get back to us. Then we either write a little note to him, could be a a standard note, but all you have to do is pull it out of the file. Put a date on it and say it says. Uh we haven't heard from you for ninety days or. Period time. What is your current thinking? On this applicant, what are you gonna do with this applicant?
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, he's doing that now, just by calling him.
Well, it should be, it should be invited, because next CEO might not be as responsible as them.
But the situation. You know, based on what response Hans got from the attorney is if they. You know, it's been a hundred twenty days and they say, yeah, no, I I still wanna proceed. I I don't think we can say, oh, you're done, you know. Yeah, no, we're here, here's your, here's your application back.
Next where I started with Phil is like, so we put a line item on the application where they sign that they understand.
Certify.
The application expires, not active upon within so many days.
I I think that was a good a- approach, unfortunately, why?
Well, again, this is his advice. He doesn't run.
No, but he's the one that has to defend us in court.
And and it goes back to being enforceable. Now, when they sign that, aren't they making the contract?
It appears that way to me, I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah.
It appeared that way.
It's part of the agreement. So. I try to keep it simple.
I like that.
But that agreement that you're talking about has to be. A true, that kind of a statement. And that application have, does have to get approved by the town. And the resident before we do start doing that. They have to be public knowledge.
While we've changed. The application.
Without that.
Without the town's approval.
Right.
Okay, just checking.
Cause we have that authority. So, you know, Ho- Hans' original suggestion is something we could. Could do on our own. You know, the majority of the. Or. Agree.
So we're supposed to vote on that only?
Should we poll the public?
I motion, then you motion. Yeah, the hard part is when you you really deal in the two situations. You're dealing with. A law abiding person like this gentleman here that's just coming here wanting to do something. That comes to get information, puts in an application, and it's a learning process, it might take them. Eight months to get through the process of getting. The application, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
With medical issues, this, that, or whatever. Then you've got the flip side of it, where you've got people that. Are the violators that do whatever they want. That. He's gonna deal with first. That are gonna come here af- you know, after the fact applications. Where they've maybe done something. Totally wrong, so then there's there's the like, there's two different ways of dealing with two different situations. You know, where it's tough to tell this guy, hey, you got thirty days. You know, he might not be able to do it thirty days, but when you've got someone that's done something. And violated something, has been told that they violated something. Telling them a date. Isn't an issue, you've already written wrong to start. Is my perception of that. So setting a timeframe. Is is easy. You know.
Yeah, my guess is that. Uh our. Attorney and, you know, I don't know what's in his mind, but uh it's coming from the perspective of how can he? Best defend the town against that. One half of one percent. Of people that are gonna. Take the town to court or are gonna require us to take them to court. And 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 that's, you know, where he's drawing the line between, you know, doing it in an application which. Probably would work for the ninety nine point, you know, X percent. And not work for that um point one percent.
I I see where you. And if the ordinance makes sense in in the scenario you're talking about, because in that scenario, you could actually. If it's written in the ordinance, you can then. The building or the item that's in question.
I mean, if that's majority of. When you.
Stop working.
The the majority that have forgotten about it or circumstances have changed or whatever. Or when you call them, they're gonna say, oh, forget about that, you know, or 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 something like that, you know, and and. You know, the ones that are gonna want it just to hang off forever, we need to be concerned about.
And that's the difference between an application. And a application after the fact, you know, after the violation, yeah, so you're talking about violators versus.
Contest. I think. I had the poor feeling. That this view of going around us. Doing the work and then coming back for. Condoneing. It's gonna be the standard. We asking too many of them this year.
You should see.
Right.
Over this week.
So so listen, I think I think we should also, if we're gonna be changing or or um. Suggesting changes to the ordinance about this ninety days. Uh table and thing. I should think we should add. Strong language to the ordinance. Where this thing is not gonna be allowed. If you are off the ordinance. You have to redo back what was before even pulling application. I was watching, I was watching just this side notice, the 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 concept I'm introducing to you is uh. Goes back to uh. There was a report on CNN this week about the Sandy Hook. Situation. It happened ten years yesterday. And Connecticut have made very strong laws about. Use of armed force of uh um. Uh rifles and that kind of stuff. And in the last, since they changed the law laws in that state. They had not have a single mass shooting. Into Connecticut. So they're trying to put that nationwide and obviously there's a fight about that. But. Their community safer for that. Cause it did step into that. So are we gonna be? Are we gonna have enough volunteers to grapple with this in the next ten, in the next five, uh one, two, three years? Having more and more applications of this situation. And having everybody. With a headache about this situation, having residents being upset. About this kind of situations. I think that we we should look into it very hardly and uh. Stressing the ordinance that we don't wanna tolerate this kind of stuff anymore.
I mean, you're you're absolutely correct, that we've had more than our fair share of after the fact applications, both in shoreline zoning and. Some in Marshall um. You know, why? I I don't know, um the uh um. But uh. Hans has the authority to kind of separate those. Out, you know, like Rich said earlier. You know, there's nothing to prevent Hans from pursuing enforcement action, at the same time, we're reviewing an after the fact application, I mean, if there was. Extensive environmental harm, it was done deliberately. You know, something like that probably shouldn't wait around for us to dub around and make a decision, you know, that's that's an enforceable action.
Yeah.
Um and um. Uh versus, you know, something, uh you know, oversights and and, you know. Good intentions, but you know, bad things happen or whatever the circumstances, but the uh. Um. Um, you know, you gotta tease those apart. Um and and.
I I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying, I just wanna make sure that the community. Understand that that's highly discouraged, and they take the chance of saying, well. This is part of business, you know, jumping around the ordinance, it's part of business to get what I want. And that that that's not gonna be a.
Yeah, no, I agree, but you know what, Sarah, you know what the answer to that is in part? Well, two things, education. Of of the regulated community and two is. Our, you know, this town didn't enforce its ordinances for, you know, decades. And and we're just starting really with Richard, you know, and and until people understand that the ordinances are actually, you know, people. The voters approve these so they would. Be actually applied and and enforced, not to be ignored, and um you know. And once that word gets out, I'm and I'm not talking about the ninety percent, ninety five percent of people that are gonna do the right thing because they know it's the right thing to do. I'm talking about that small percentage that they realize there's a consequence to to just ignoring the town's ordinances. Then a a majority of them are gonna, they may not like it, but they'll do it, you know, just like with speed limits, you know, and you talk to any state trooper and they'll tell you there are people that have complied. Because they're afraid of getting caught, not because they think it's the right thing to do.
Right.
Um and um. Um. And then there's always gonna be that small, very small percentage that, you know, they view violating and they any penalty cost of business.
Right.
And and this town has seen a a case of that in shoreline zoning.
And and I would go so far as to say is to for the. Parents, sisters, people doing that. People who consider it the cost of doing business. I don't know what language could be in an ordinance that would be effective to that population.
Well, that's where we're starting with a. These structures. Right now, after the back permits are only double. The permanent fee. Well, our average. Building permits are on eighty three dollars. Nobody's gonna.
Make it thousands. Thousands of dollars.
Well. I do, I I agree that the fees, you know, are out of date, um and and you know, the fee for an after the fact uh. Should be more um expensive um. For sure, but you know, I I I guess, but this brings me to my question for you, now that we're back on to the fees. Did you wanna propose something and have us take a look at it? Is that how you wanted to proceed, Hans?
I I I think. Now's the time to seek input. Okay, from everybody.
Just remember.
It's a select board process, but. If you have something to say, like.
The people in the lake should get taxed heavily. That's that's the biggest part of our tax income of the town in the lakes. So, you know, just to keep on driving more fees to people. Especially someone local that's been here all my life. In time. I can't even afford to live away unless I'm right.
No, we're not talking about taxing the lake people, this is everybody that's gonna build.
But my understanding is they haven't been updated in twenty five years, that's the last I heard from Mary Vogel.
Minimum building from the minimum.
We just went through this conversation a couple of years ago, we just updated.
I don't think that's a that's a that's a case. In in the last, they had a meeting Tuesday and uh. Then the town manager researched that and she said that like in. Ten top years. They have not been updating of fees. So that that does just with application.
People, you may remember when we delved into this on the comprehensive. Plan and implementation committee and what we were told by Anthony and. Mary Vogel was um the fees haven't been updated for decades.
Yeah.
Including the shoreline zoning, commercial uh commercial development. And a whole bunch of other fees that this board has nothing to do with. And it all rests with the select board and our authority, but. And and we actually made a recommendation to the select board that we presented to them and they discussed. Was updating those fees, was summarily ignored, but um.
That's been the old the select board right now, as it as it is. That I don't think we have, we can have input on that, but the decision is.
Yeah.
Decision, that's that's one portion of the whole uh dialogue is, the other. Portion of the dialogue is why are why are the fees? For perpetrators. One is fees for applic- One is fees for applica- uh applicants. But then this this set of people perpetrators is not, I don't think there's nothing on that.
We don't do that.
I mean, I certainly be interested in knowing what towns um. It that are similar to Belgrade have for fees um um. I I don't know personally, um, you know, whether. Shoreline zoning, I don't know, maybe you can get us some examples or.
We've collected a bunch. I would love to know what they are. I would love to hear some examples of communities like Belgrade. Whatever their fees, whatever their fees are. Under the building permit, you know, it's twenty-five dollars. And square footage, like six cents is worth for construction. Rome, they start seventy-five dollars and nine cents is good, but. It's not exorbitant, but it just shows how far behind.
That shows me, tells me right there that we updated. Because we never used to charge square footage. We charged twenty-five bucks. So they have updated on the square footage. So, you know, I don't know how long ago. But it used to be a twenty-five dollar, come in, pay your twenty-five bucks. So I don't know when they updated to the square footage, but they did.
I I believe you're right about that part. I think that.
So it has been updated.
Now, so I think another question is. Should they be updated again? Because I think it's been some time since. Whenever that last part was. So. But anyway, relative to the fee discussion we're talking about tonight, I I would like to know. What some other examples are of communities. These. To use as maybe some examples or to pitch them and just say, we don't like that. What are you gonna look at three four? You can look at Mount Vernon.
No, yeah, we we need to look at towns similar.
Springfield, Mount Vernon, and Rome. Uh, Sizney.
Oakland.
Oakland is Manchester.
Yeah, China, China would be a good example.
There's still much larger communities. I mean, you look at. Belgrade was like thirty-two hundred. People. Oh, in terms of numbers of people?
Yeah.
I'm trying to keep that perspective.
Yeah, Chi- China would be a good, good one to look at. Um.
Yeah, it's Carter, another one. Carter's, you know, over there.
Yeah, that's right, when um went through.
Yeah. A document uh with that information.
I can make an Excel spreadsheet with it, you know, side by side.
Sure.
Love data, so that's good. And do study deviations and that would be.
Oh, God. Do you wanna do capacity uh study on it?
All right, so that would be my. I would love to see what some of those other fees are like and then we could maybe.
Go forward together.
Yeah, right.
And we've got it, it's just a matter of organizing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hans. And then the last thing you had on here was about impact.
Impact fees.
Impact fees and. And that was just per general discussion. I mean, I don't wanna. If you wanna turn off the camera, that's not a playing role role. Unless you wanna make an ordinance.
And the impact fees are like. You get a a super big subdivision, what's the impact on the fire department and impact on? Um.
I think it's.
Schools.
Yeah.
And.
We'll just have general discussion about where it falls.
I'm also.
You know, I I mean, my understanding is those are usually um put into place in places like Scarborough and and towns like that that are. Growing really, you know, leaps over bounds and 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 it's really increasing property taxes as a result because. Property tax. Payers are basically subsidizing developers by in absorbing the higher cost of education that goes with a subdivision, for example, or. Um, you know, roads or fire fire service um. But, you know, we're not experiencing particularly, you know, fast growth in Belgrade um by any means uh.
But. Impact fees are covering recovering infrastructure costs.
Right.
And. Delta Ambulance just came to us. We're now paying per capita. To us service lead to Delta and it's not insignificant.
Yeah.
It's.
It is. You're just right.
And there's your road usage, you know, we just repaid. Gustil Road as an example.
Yeah, but we're getting taxed for all that stuff.
The end of Gustil is wooden, somebody buys it and decides to put in a mobile home park. They're gonna wear that road out. So impact fees can be. I see.
You you know.
Regulated in ways that they're reimbursing.
So you've touched on a pet peeve, pet peeve of mine, and that is, I think it's kind of wickedly dumb about the way it approaches adoption of roads.
You wanna stop recording?
No, no. I've told this like word before, so I don't care. Uh, you know, um, the fact that we're adopting dead end roads. You know, that go nowhere. Uh, and roads that have not been constructed in modern day standards as a public. Road is just insane and having taxpayers pay for those maintenance and rebuild rebuilding the subdivision road next to us. Is just a classic example, town adopts it. Rocks are coming through the asphalt, you know, it was a lot built as a logging road by Skip Hammond. And uh and immediately had to replace him about, you know. About a four foot Diana Kohler, because it was a rusty old metal one that was used, a used one that was used originally, it was a logging road, right? Uh, that's just crazy, you know, and and it just doesn't get any traction in this town. I don't get it, you know. Depending why the dollar foolish as far as I'm concerned in terms of government.
So what what I hear you saying is that we would like to look into that so we can structure scaffold. That in the ordinance, just if if it happens in the future, we have something to rely on.
There's some communities that can do impact these per bedroom being built. So every bedroom is gonna have an occupant of some sort, more traffic, so it's kind of scaling up. Um. Town revenue to cover. Fees coming.
I like I like your vision a lot.
Incoming cost, future cost.
I do like your vision.
Yeah, interesting. It's again, discussion that we had, we don't have to do it in force of a meeting.
Yeah, I my personal feeling is I think there's a time and place for those. I'm not sure. Um, Belgrade is growing at such a rate that that we're at that time and place is my personal opinion.
But that's not for the divine angle.
Hi.
There's that too.
Yeah, that too.
I mean, the only infrastructure we got besides roads and solid waste. Uh, and fire. It's not like we have police uh is.
Right.
If water says public water system, I mean, we don't have sewer, we don't have public sewer.
Right.
Um, it would be this the water system for the for this part of town.
Probably works coming up.
Public works is coming up. You don't have enough time in this meeting to explain to you what happened to be in Minnesota, but that's for another day, right? I can tell you a horror story.
Well, yeah.
We would love you to have it in the sun and board, you know that.
I like this side of the day.
So before we go there, can we um um. Motion to adjourn.
Almost. I wanna make sure that um have we covered everything that you want to get. And then, George, did you wanna bring up one thing?
Yeah, I um I have a suggestion for an agenda item for either our next meeting or the next time we don't have a lot of applications. Um, so when when Pete uh announced uh that he uh was gonna be taking some time off. From being at the board, uh it it got me thinking about uh some other uh boards in town that have like seasonal residences. And uh and where people are not present for length or periods of time and what? What governs, you know, how we perform our duties uh as a as an individual board member? So I I um, I don't know if the the rest of you got this, but when I joined the board, I I was provided with that nineteen ninety-one charter. And that I mentioned earlier and um. That the select board at the time uh approved um. And it and it's what establishes things like. Our three-year terms, when we rotate as member, our memberships rotate um. All the, like I said, the uh how we are supposed to conduct a public hearing um. Uh, when we need to recuse ourselves. That kind of stuff. So um, the uh. But in the course of doing that, one thing led to another and with Mary Vogel's help, um I was able to, I it led, I um. It it's written in such a way that it almost looks like. Uh, that's how the planning board was established or reestablished in nineteen ninety-one. Well, I. I don't know much, but I knew well enough that you have to establish that by a town meeting vote, the select board can't establish a planning board. Um, and uh and wondered when the town, when this board was actually legally established. Well, as it turns out, it was established in nineteen seventy by a warrant article approval at town meeting. And uh so that is pre-home rule. When state statutes were changed to give towns more flexibility on how they govern themselves. And uh and the statute that we're required to operate under conflicts. With um that nineteen ninety-one charter. Uh, it's more stringent. In fact, one of the best example of it is that according to that, we're all supposed to be appointed to five-year terms. Rather than three-year terms. So I'd like to have a discussion about that and poss- the possibility of uh whether we need to get some legal input. On whether there's a problem and if there is a problem. Uh, how we might wanna. You know, what what might be the best way to proceed, you know, um. Uh, obviously, I talked to my wife a little bit about this and she's encountered this problem before in other towns where they actually had to reestablish a planning board. Under um uh um the way towns uh as if we were under home rule. Rather than um uh so planning boards could first be established by towns nineteen fifty-seven. And uh and towns between nineteen fifty-seven and nineteen seventy-one. There's one set of statutes that apply those nineteen seventy-one to present, there's a a different set of statutes.
Yes, oh my gosh.
Um, and um and I it. I don't know that it in would necessarily, you know, if we did nothing, it would necessarily impact, you know, the credibility of the decisions planning boards over the years have made, but. Uh, it'd be good to sort that out.
Yeah.
Figure out what legal basis we're on.
Yeah.
Um, and uh and it wasn't anything that I was looking for, it was just I stumbled upon it and um. And that um. In talking to Mary, her recommendation is that a minimum of this nineteen ninety-one charter. Uh, which is probably not the right legal term to use, but um. Um, probably should be revised because it's quite antiquated and it and it's a lot of, there's a lot that it doesn't govern. For other towns, apparently it governs things like. Um. Unexcused absences, uh uh inappropriate behavior uh when a a planning board member. Uh, and how they could be removed from office, that kind of stuff.
So if we had this on the plan on an agenda. So you can further discuss this.
Yeah, yeah, I I could go into more detail on on what I've found. I mean, I'm, you know. I know enough to be dangerous, but um the uh, but I I think it's worth. Talking about more and seeing what the full board wants would like to do if anything. So.
You you mentioned uh absences from meetings and stuff. Do you know that that wasn't addressed in there or was, do you think it might have been addressed? I read a document that had to with. With the boards in town and. It had like. Timeframes, not timeframes, but things like you've missed three meetings or something.
And well, you you.
The course of the year, if you went by that strictly, you wouldn't have the planning board.
Yeah, the 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 charter that we have or that or that was adopted in nineteen ninety-one is silent about absences. Um, but um, talking to Becky, she said that there's a lot of towns that. Not necessarily just planning boards, but boards in general where they have language that I don't know about the numbers, but if you have unexcused. Whole series of absences or if you've missed, you know, more than two months worth of meetings or three months worth of meetings, you're automatically off the board. It even goes that far. Um, the.
School board and the school boards like that, you have.
Yeah, yeah.
If you ask in a row, you're out.
Yeah, or, you know, uh, she gave me one example, I can't remember what county it is that, you know, um. Um, that, you know, just codifies basically. Uh, that the chair has to approve it, you know, if it's not an emergency or for medical reason or something like that. So there's all kinds of different ways you can. Deal with it if you wanna deal with it at all. Um, but um.
But they're they're.
But like, for example, Mary's. Told me that she said, well, um, uh. You um, like, for example, the um. Lakes Committee. That you don't have to be a year-round resident beyond that committee. They have a number of, you know. Um. Uh, snowbirds on their committee and and uh and that wouldn't work for us, uh obviously. Um, well, this charter. Doesn't really deal with that, though. It says you have to be a resident, but it doesn't say anything about attendance.
Yeah.
So you could be a snowbird beyond this committee, because, you know, so um. Anyway, uh, I'd said more than I intended.
Nineteen ninety-one, they've also created Zoom. I was just gonna say, yeah, you you could be, I mean. Attendance isn't.
Well, that's right.
That may be fine.
That's right, uh, you know, and and that except that the, as you know. Well, maybe you don't know Hans, but the select board has a policy that restricts our ability to use Zoom as individuals. Like when we're ill or something of that nature.
It's a state law that some from the pandemic. Through the pandemic, they allow you to have some meetings. Because of the emergency. But then, once everything reopened. The only reason that a board member can join through Zoom is because uh you're sick or. You have to help yourself and you get, you have to be separated, but you are called to be present in these meetings. You have to be present, otherwise you are absent. You cannot join just by Zoom and make decisions by Zoom. And then if you join by Zoom. You have to be visible. You cannot just land the screen and say, oh, I'm here, but they they have to be visible and you have to be moving in your screen. Because you can put a picture of your own screen too.
Black there.
Yeah, black there, yeah. I mean, so uh that that's governed by state law.
Well, so Hans, if you could, you know, whether it's next meeting or the meeting after that, whenever there's a large number of permits. I I'll send you an email with some, you know.
Slipping into an agenda.
And and I'll also forward uh the two um. Uh, the copy of um of the warrant article that was approved in nineteen seventy. For everybody to take a look at and um. And the um nineteen ninety-one charter approved by the select board. Unfortunately, the copy I have is. Parts of it are not legible and it wasn't signed and I asked Mary about it and apparently maybe the original got lost in the move from the old. Among everything else that got lost in the move, um. But anyway, I I'll I'll send you that stuff and then. We can include it in so everybody can see it.
Sounds good. Thank you. So we've covered. The CEO updates and George seems to bring up the request to have an agenda item. You have some backstory to that. Um, anything else? Anybody?
I guess I just point out that attorneys, when attorneys write contracts, they're very defensive. And they like you to have a hundred and ten percent of what you're asking for. So while putting an ordinance in place, again, I think it's. Probably a good idea, but maybe burdensome. If you guys have the, sorry, the board has. The authority to make changes to applications like putting deadlines on and that sort of thing. Maybe it's a good stop yet until that ordinance might be passed. So at least there's something there.
Yeah.
That's it. Thank you very much.
So I guess my question, should we have a vote? On adding that same into the application?
No. Not tonight.
Not at both.
Not tonight. I think it would be a good agenda thing to talk about, though.
Well, that's something that you can do on without our goal.
No, no, because I think what we talked about before is that. That we've updated the permit application without having to bring it to the town voters.
Okay.
So, you know, getting into the exact details of what we wanna put on it, if we want to update that permit application, I think would be more than, it would be a discussion we will share.
That's not. George, I meant charter online.
No, Mary had to go digging for it. I I had, I I was given a copy when I joined the board um. And uh and I couldn't find it. I lost it, I guess, and uh so I innocently asked Mary. And uh and I couldn't find it, I lost it, I guess, and so I innocently asked Mary if I could get a copy and it took her a while. Some digging to find it. That was used.
One of the things.
Yeah, one of them.
All right, so is if nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor of adjourned? Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes, yes.
Craig, me too, and Darren, thank you all for coming today. Appreciate it.